With that, please stand with us. And, well, before that, I'll call the meeting order. Please stand with us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is roll call. Let me get this voting. Start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
Well, Councilor's present with Councilors Hensley and Counselor V. Hill previously requesting to be excused.
Thank you. Next up is agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There is not.
Thank you.
If not, Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda and excuse Counselor V. Hill and Counselor Hensley.
Counselor Coleman?
I second.
I've got a motion and a second on the approval of the agenda. Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none. Start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We have citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. I have one card. And although Mr. Brink asked me not to call him first, he's the only card here, so welcome, Mr. Brink. Thank you very much. Step to the podium and give us your name and your address if you so choose.
Yeah, Mayor, you're forgiven. So, thank you. My name's Ron Brink. I don't live in Alamosa City, but I own property in town, and I thank you, Council and Mayor, for this opportunity to voice my disappointment in last meeting of your approving of the new liquor store over here on Main Street. I don't know how many liquor stores we need. I mean, within a few blocks of each other, just keep putting them in. You also have to remember that those people had a very shabby petition and did an extremely shabby job of that, I thought. And I just, I think it's just kind of an iffy deal doing that. No parking there on a bad corner. I don't understand this at all. So, I just think the way it was carried out, it looks like your rules are, rules and regs are just kind of iffy. So, anyway, thank you. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brink. Appreciate your presence. Next up, we have ceremonial items. Tonight, we are pleased to announce a new team. The chief is here. Chief Oakes, thank you for being here.
I have a little technical difficulty. He told her, stole her tie.
He's not a big fan of the tie.
Thank you for being here, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just want to introduce you. A while back, I talked about obtaining a second K-9 from the National Forest Service. That transaction did go through with some equipment as well. Officer Garcia was chosen as the K-9 officer. Beginning in February, she started her training and successfully completed the training, went through a testing phase, and on April 29th, she received her National K-9 Police Association certification with DAX. DAX is the K-9. I'll let Amber talk a little bit about him. She knows more about him than I do as far as his breed, how old he is, and what certifications he has held and currently holds.
Well, he's very entertained right now. DAX is about five years old. As Chief was saying, we got him from a different agency. He's had two previous handlers, so, you know, he's kind of been through a different type of training with the initial handler. His second handler had him for about a year. They just, they couldn't find, I mean, he was kind of bored. He wasn't really doing anything. He's a detection dog. He's a phenomenal drug dog. He's used to not being on lead. Usually, you release him, you tell him to go find what we need to find, and he'll do it. He's actually, most of our dogs, even Sammy is, she can do article searches, which is something that Chief was looking into anyway, but they start off that way, doing article searches, finding weapons and that sort of things, but they start with like a, you know, just small things at first. During our training, DAX kind of has an out problem. He's high energy, which is really good for drug narcotics or any type of searches. So, we've been working with that, disciplining the out. He's not doing so hot right now. He's making me look real, real bad right now. But, you know, today, we did a couple of searches, just in the parking lot, doing some training, and he did amazing, you know. So, he, he's living with us. I have two other dogs. He's, you know, at first, I was scared to death, to be honest with you, but he's been awesome. He's not a fan of my cat. He hates the cat. We have to separate those guys. But he, we work well together, and a lot of the trainers over there, they see the difference from when DAX was with the initial handler to mine. To me, we've bonded extremely well. It took us about a week to bond. On our first night, when we got certified, it was terrible weather. It was on the 29th of March, I believe. Coming home, an hour after we got home, we got called out to search a vehicle. CSP called, or an agency says. Second night, we actually found, I mean, residue, residual. We didn't find anything big. I just recently had my first big search, and where we got some dope, and pretty proud, and it was like the greatest feeling in the world. It's a good high. It's like when your kids graduate, or I would compare it to. I don't have kids. I just have a gnarly dog that's gonna, that tore up my sergeant's tie. I'm sorry, Sarge. So, yeah, he's doing really well. Yeah. Come here, puppy. Come on. Boy, where'd it tore up that tie? Oh, boy. Oh, boy. He's high energy. He's only gained about 10 pounds since I've gotten him. He probably got me in shape. He wears me out, seriously. Loves his toys. He finds them at home, and then he turns out house. So, he's like, he's like, he's like, he's cool. So, he's good most of the way. We've been working with this cat for a long time, but the trainers are late speaking up and I could stop the stops, and he's gonna be a lot of like, he's gonna be kind of worried there. He's fine. Like, this is the best job ever. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Absolutely. Counselor Gregel?
I did. You talked a little bit about handling. How does that work as far as if you're called, if we're called out, you have to go, right? Or can another handler use him? Or how does that work?
No, absolutely not. Me and DAX are two, these are the only obedience in my hands.
All right.
Amber, can you go back to the microphone? Thank you.
Because you talked about the different types of handlers, you know, and how was the adjustment? Because he's been working already with one or two prior handlers, you said?
Yeah, he had two handlers before me. We had a bonding stage where we bonded for a month. We didn't do any training. We just hugged and cuddled and belly rubbed, and he licked my ears, you know, like we bonded. I guess how you did that. Then we started training, and it's just, it's like a business partner. Like, me and him get along great at home. I feed him. I play with him. He's fantastic, but sometimes he can be a real jerk at work. So, he's just, like I said, he's got an out problem, and first day of training, I got snapped. So, you know, you gotta expect to get bitten. In fact, one of the trainers over there, he was helping me, and I was training along with CSP and a lot of, a bunch of people down there. He's had a cast on his thumb. Well, I made the mistake of asking what happened, and his dog bit his thumb off. So, he became complacent and went to grab the ball, and it bit his thumb off. And he said, "Well, I've got high hopes for you," and I'm pretty positive all the time. It was a good deal, and I passed, so. So, yeah, I got bit a couple times. My mom's not impressed with it, but, so, it's fun. It's definitely fun. You just gotta, I didn't try to bite him back, but it's one of those things. You gotta show him who's boss.
Counselor Daniel?
Amber, thank you so much for bringing DAX and showing him off. What do you think is the best, going to be the best asset that having another dog brings to the team?
It takes so much pressure off of Corporal Kinshew. You know, me and Kinshew actually work really well together. We're gonna be able to train together. We can do blind searches. We could tag team a lot of the stuff that he does alone. You know, getting called out with, alone is pretty tough. We just got called out to the Bleep Comm Corps, and there's 70 rooms in there, and these dogs get pretty tired. And, you know, DAX with his, having that second dog will be beneficial for him and for the community, just having that second nose, so.
Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Officer Garcia, thank you for your service and welcome, DAX. I'm just curious. I know you mentioned Officer Kinshew earlier.
Yeah.
How often will you all be going out on searches, like joint searches throughout the community, do you think?
It just depends. I mean, hopefully, we start, you know, using it, using these assets. I'm hoping, I'm looking for traffic all the time, so trying to do maybe building searches on local Comm Corps, just making that more of a ritual or a habit, just to kind of, one for training, two for prevention, is what I'm looking for, so.
Thank you.
Mayor, I had one more question.
Go ahead, Counselor.
When other counties that don't have dogs, when they call us, do we go out there and help out, or do we charge? Or what's the process, Chief? Or whoever wants to answer.
Chief, Chief will answer that. Come here, Chief.
As far as other counties, Rear Grand County has a dog in Montevista they utilize. The important thing is that now with constitutional laws, you can't detain people longer than reasonable, longer than it takes to write the ticket, basically. So, if another county calls us, the response time has to be quick, so the dogs have to be close by. So, that's really unfeasible for us to go to Rear Grand County or Suatch County unless it's for a building search. If they have a reason to search a building, then we partner with them. It's the collaboration that we talk about, having the partnership, working together. That's, we don't charge them for it.
Good.
What we do is we adjust their schedules, so we're not paying overtime, or to avoid a lot of overtime. So, we do a lot of shift adjusting for them if we need to.
Well, I appreciate that, because, you know, we talked, even at CML, about the different partnerships and stuff, and that's a good example there, so thank you very much, Chief.
You're welcome.
Counselor Stefano?
Good job, Amber. Looks like he's really attached to you already. Beautiful dog. Good luck in the future. Thanks for your service.
You're welcome. I enjoy it.
Absolutely. What a wonderful combination, and I have a really strange question for you, but do these dogs require a special diet? One that's, and, you know, maybe a strange question, but I...
No, not at all. There's a lot of work with dogs that I didn't realize when you, when you get them. Like, my dogs are old. They're 13, you know, regular old food. They're lazy, they're fat. This dog, this dog's a 40K dog. He requires a lot of attention. He requires a lot of special needs, you know. His original food that they were feeding him was $127 a bag, and it was 40 pounds. So, we kind of had to adjust that, and they didn't even carry it around locally. So, it's high protein, for sure, and high energy for high-energy dogs, so definitely.
So, to supplement that cost, what we've done is we worked at the vendors, Walmart, Tractor Supply, Big R, the makers of the food itself, and received donations from the, for them, to help supplement the cost and not to impact our budget extremely. So, our vendors locally have been really well with working with both of our dogs and supplying food.
Thank you, Chief, and Amber and DAX. Welcome to Alamosa as a team.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have two items. The approval of the minutes of the May 18, 2016 meeting, and the designation of our city attorney as agent pursuant to Colorado revised statutes 24-32-116. Any questions or comments on Consent Calendar A? Counselor Stefano?
I move that we approve the Consent Calendar.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second on Consent Calendar As. Are any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, start voting, please. Did someone abstain? Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Move on to regular business. Presentation from outside agencies. This evening, we are happy to have Xcel Energy, our energy future. Thank you.
Welcome. Let's see how high that is. Oh, good. Okay, that works for me. Hi, everyone. I know that I have met several of you throughout the last year. My name's Ashley Valdez, and I am the area manager for Xcel Energy for Southern Colorado. And my primary responsibilities are working with community governments and community affairs as well. I have the privilege to have taken over for Kathy Worthington, who you all know. Kathy was a absolute great person, larger-than-life, and when I first started, everybody said, "Well, you know, you've got some big shoes to fill." And I thought, "Well, she's a size nine. I'm a seven and a half. I will never fill her shoes, so I'm just gonna make my own." We have different styles and different personalities. I love her dearly. I did tell her I was coming down here, and she did want me to tell you all hello. What I have to talk with you through tonight is a proposal. It's called Our Energy Future, and it's basically an update of what Xcel Energy is going to be doing over the next three to five years. I've been in the utility industry for 20 years, and I would have to say, within the last five years, things are just moving at lightning speed as far as change to how utility industries work and operate and the technologies that are available. As you may know, Xcel Energy is a leading company in energy renewal, renewables. We are the number-one company in wind, and I'm proud to say, for the 12th year in a row, that says 11, but we were just recently named the number-one wind energy company in the country for the 12th year in a row. We have a really robust demand-side management, and we also have the Clean Air, Clean Jobs Act that we've been very, working really, really hard in. But, as we look forward, we have to ask ourselves, what is next? You know, what exactly are people looking for? When you look at this, all of this on your screen there, these are all really great achievements, but we know there's more that we can do. And so, that's what Our Energy Future is all about. That's what we're looking on the next horizon for how we go about bringing energy to our consumers. Now, the key to this is to say, what if? I mean, imagine a day where you could pick up the phone and call and say, "Okay, I'd like to get my electricity turned on." And instead of it just being a one-size-fits-all, here's your energy, you know, this is when you get your bill, we would have someone be able to say to you, "How would you like to receive your electricity? Do you want it in 20% of it from renewables? Would you like 8% from wind? Would you like all of it from wind?" And so, that is what Our Energy Future is all about. Now, interestingly enough, these things started, some of them, with legislative mandates pushing companies, utilities, to become more robust in how they go to the market with renewable energies. And that was a challenge for some time, because the technology hadn't quite fit and met with where the utilities were. I am so proud to work for Xcel, because I can tell you that they are a very proactive company, and rather than being legislaters as to how we will do something, we're tuning in with what our customers want and what they're asking for. And more and more, customers are asking for renewables. They're asking for wind. They're asking for solar. They're asking for different options, you know? Can you read my meter without coming to my home? Because I have a dog, and, you know, I just want a little more flexibility with how you do that. So, Xcel Energy is embracing that future, and we're boldly stepping into this new future with technologies and energy. Go ahead. Now, you might be asking how we would be doing that. We are looking to power technology. As I mentioned, the emerging technologies are going to pave the way for Xcel Energy to transform and modernize the grid. The grid is what gets all of the electricity from across Colorado, from across the country, and brings it right to your home. But it's in, it's in need of updating, and in order to meet the demands of renewable energies, we have to do that. So, that's one of the things that we're looking at doing. And in modernizing the grid, that's going to foster cutting-edge technologies, energy efficiencies, and renewables. And it will empower you, as the customer, to make those choices for how you receive your energy. Now, one of the things that's really been, it's great, depending on what side of the market you're on, natural gas, as you all know, the prices of that are really, really low. And so, we were looking for an opportunity to capitalize on that and make it a better, less volatile market for rate structures with our consumers. So, what we're asking the PUC to let us do is, we have a gas rate reserve filing. This allows us to buy gas at these historically low levels. And you all know markets, you know, whatever is right down here at the bottom, it is eventually gonna go up. And so, to guard against volatility in the natural gas market, we are looking to lock the prices in now, be able to do the exploration, and be able to have that even in study for you, even when the prices go, start going back up as they know, as we know they will. So, that is one of the things we're looking at doing. We are also, bless you, we are also keenly aware of safety. That is a number-one goal for our company. So, we're strengthening our natural gas system. We've got a lot of pipes out there that are really, really old, corrosive, and we want to make sure that we upgrade those to meet the demands of the future as well. Now, an interesting thing about electricity is, one of the downfalls of it has been that you come over, you flip the switch. When you flip that switch, that electricity literally has to be made, generated, and through the grid into your home, like that. There's not been the ability to store it, but there's new technology that's breaking on the market, and Panasonic is working, has a battery storage ability, and we are working right now with them on a couple of pilot projects to capitalize on that. And what that's gonna do, and specifically for solar, is it will allow you to capture the energy of the sun, that power, hold it, and then use it when it's needed. And so, that helps us with our peaks. We won't, you know, if we have the demand, you've actually got the energy there. So, that stabilizes the grid. It stabilizes prices for our consumers, and it allows us to tap into a wonderful renewable energy resource, which you all know all about, because you have it in abundance down here in the San Luis Valley. So, that is one. The other innovative technologies that we're looking at is modernizing our grid, and we can do that through a new metering process called smart metering. Now, having been around utilities for as long as I have, I have heard all the bugaboos about smart meters. We are not interested in how much Velveeta cheese is in your fridge. I guarantee you that. But what we are interested in is knowing when your electricity goes out, because traditionally, what has happened in utilities is, you know, we're in a different office or a different area, we may not know the electricity's gone out. So, Heather picks up the phone, she calls in and says, "Hey, my electricity's out. When are you guys coming out?" Well, we then have to research, find out where it is, get the guys, get them out in the trucks, send them on their way, and it takes a long time sometimes to restore electricity. But with smart meters, what that allows us to do is, we have towers that will be set up, and they communicate with each other. So, in Denver, they could know before you ever know that the electricity's gone out, before you even realize it's out, and we can dispatch our crews rather quickly. And so, that helps with reliability. It also helps us to view the system and how it's transmitting, to see any problems, so we can troubleshoot those in advance and be able to make sure the energy is far more reliable, and then when it does go out, get it turned back on for you, because that's really what everybody is interested in. So, that's your smart meter. Another thing that we're really excited about is the LED streetlights. I have been working diligently with Patrick and Heather, and I just so appreciate both of their work that they've done. We gave our cities options. A, option A was an upfront, no-cost conversion. The rate savings on that is lower, because of course, we have to cover those conversion costs. And option B is to have the conversion cost paid upfront, and you all are, I'm sure you've, you know, talked diligently about this. And so, we are working with you all to make sure that we have what works best for the city of Alamosa. The great thing I can tell you about this is, one, Denver did a pilot project on crime. They had one neighborhood that the crime went down significantly because of the LED lights, and what this light does, it's brighter, it's a cleaner light, it doesn't have the yellow tones to it. So, they're able to see what color somebody's jacket is, what color a car is, and it really kind of prohibits people from even wanting to do things they shouldn't be doing. So, that's a benefit. The other thing I'm really excited to tell you about tonight is, I was just on a conference call the other day. We thought this project would take three to five years to roll out and get everything changed out. I'm very pleased to tell you that we're looking at starting the conversions in the San Luis Valley, the first part of December, and we're hopeful that we'll have it finished by the end of the first quarter in 2017, so you'll be able to recognize those savings right away. So, I hope that pleases you as much as it does me. Now, in our Phase II rate case, a lot of people wondered, you know, what we were doing with it. And really, what we want to do is to assure fair and affordable rates, and it's intended to help customers embrace the new technology. One of the things that we want to guard against is having one rate class subsidize another rate class. And that can happen sometimes with renewables, because if you're, we want to give everyone the options. So if they want to, to have a renewable, they can. It might cost them a little bit extra, but it won't cost the person that's on a limited income extra, so that the person that's having it, you know, affords it. So that's one of the things behind our, our rate filing that we did. It allows for interactive technologies to be used, such as our smart meters and the battery storage. It also promotes customer control and choices. So you can look at what you're using at your house, and there's now the smart thermometer, or thermostats, for example. I bet my kids would wish it was a smart thermometer. But a thermostat, and so you have those abilities, and we have several programs now available to our customers, to make those choices and decide how you're going to use your energy. Do you want to use it, you know, when the, the peak demand is off? And then with the battery storage coming up in the next several years, that'll lessen that too. So it's a, a great thing, and we're really excited about those. Another thing that we have filed with in this Phase II rate filing, and the city folks should be really happy to hear about this, is the banner agreement. I know you have festivals, and you hang things on the banners, and it's been really cumbersome. We're working through that now to make that a whole lot less cumbersome. And as long as what you're looking to place, you know, on the facilities, as long as it meets the guidelines, as far as safety requirements and those things, we're not going to be, you know, it, there are your facilities there, and, you know, we're happy to partner with you to use them. So that's good news, too. One of the really exciting things, and I think what you guys will love about it, is its Solar Connect. We have a program currently, and it is a wind program, to where you could decide that you wanted to get half of your electricity from wind. And paying a little extra a month on your bill, you could say, I want 50% of my energy to come from wind, and you'd pay a couple dollars, I mean, literally, a couple dollars a month more on your bill to receive that. Well, we're approaching the PUC to do the same kind of project, but with Solar Connect. And the great thing about that, in doing it with solar, and what would be beneficial to you all, is, once we get this through the PUC, it's going to be based on demand. So as long as people are demanding it, and that's what, you know, our research shows and where the customer trends are going, people really do want to be more efficient, they want to lower their carbon footprint. And so we'll be seeking out opportunities in the San Luis Valley and other places to be able to afford and have the power that people are demanding through Solar Connect. So we're looking forward to that. I don't have any specific details at what we're looking at, but this is a prime area for that. So that's good news and really exciting, and I'll look forward to working with you all on those projects as they move forward. So in a nutshell, this is what we're doing. We're investing in a comprehensive plan now, so that we're prepared to change energy and the way people use energy in the future. We want to do this again, so prices remain competitive. That is really important. Everything that we're looking at doing, we're looking to do it in ways that are really efficient, offer lower costs, energy, to keep people's energy prices low. That's, you know, one of the key factors in it. We want to keep the state attractive for economic development, and one of the big things for the state is renewable energy. We are so blessed to live in Colorado, and there's so many opportunities because of that. So that's a key factor. And then just being able to add more renewable energy options for our customers to have at their disposal. We want to do all this in concert with you, our customers, and we want to work with our regulators, our elected officials, and any other parties that have a strong interest in doing it. So that is our energy future, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Counselor Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Valdez, for your presentation. It was very informative.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate that.
Sure.
With all the improved technologies, which one has the potential to have the greatest cost savings to residential consumers?
Well, as far as the renewables go, they all do. It, it used to be that the renewables, yes, they're free and that they're, they're out there, but the cost of getting them into the grid and utilizing that technology was expensive. So, for example, we have the Rush Creek One and Two Wind Project that is out east in the Lincoln County, Albert County, and that is going to provide the cheapest wind that is available at three cents a kilowatt hour. So that's one of the big factors that we're looking at with that. We think solar will also be an advantage for our consumers. The other thing that's greatly important is, people now have a way to, you know, everything's far more efficient than it used to be, from our appliances. You know, our customers are a lot more savvy. You know, they know as far as power and how it works and everything, that if you can do time of use and, and do it when the energy is lower, and you can reap some savings, even if it's, you know, weather stripping in your windows and, and all those types of things, those, those small projects can add up to big savings. So there's a gamut of them, and it makes being in utilities really exciting versus it being just so expensive all the time. Did that answer your question?
Yes, you did a great job.
Sure.
Counselor Gregel.
Great presentation, Ashley.
Thank you.
But my question was, is a different question.
Okay.
Here, about, oh, six months ago, I had a power outage over at my place, and I live right behind XL.
Okay.
So I, I called in, you know, you guys have an office and stuff like that, but I called somebody, and they sent me to some other state, you know? And I asked, I says, well, what's going on? And they said, well, we don't know. I says, well, I live right behind XL, they should know. And it took for about a half hour or so before anybody even responded. And my, I guess my question is, the office that you have here is, is just merely where you have your workers, and there's, there's no, no, an area where a person could call if there's a problem, or, or instead of calling California or Minnesota, whoever they direct your call to?
Yeah, we do utilize call centers simply because that is, you know, when we're talking about cost savings, it's far more efficient. In the state of Colorado alone, we serve 120 communities. So having, we do have service centers, but we do not have a place as far as customer service to walk in. And the microgrid and modernizing the grid, when we're looking at doing that, and specifically with the smart meters, when you call in, once those are installed, and it's, it's going to be a couple of year process to get those done, that's going to alleviate that, because we're going to know before you do that we have a problem, and we'll be able to dispatch those crews. You can always call me on my cellphone, and I will call John Valdez.
Sure.
And, and ask him what's going on. And he's usually, you know, the one that I call when I need to find out, so.
Well, you know, this is a small community, and you know that there's an officer, and I understand that you have call centers, and, and people have to call in, and then they have to call back to you guys, so. But that's, you know, frustrating sometimes.
I understand.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It is a, a service center, so we do meet with contractors there and work, you know, engineering and planning, but.
Counselor Stefano.
Good presentation, Ashley.
Thank you.
About how long down the road can customers, are customers going to look forward to this solar energy project that they can sign up for?
It, it depends on the Public Utilities Commission. And we are looking for support from our communities, letters of support for the project, anything like that, that, that you can do, talking with your local elected officials. And the more that we let them know that this is what our customers want, the more they're going to move in that direction. We're just working through pricing structures and those types of things right now, but I do think it's going to be coming, and, you know, hopefully within the next, I don't know, year at the most, I would think. But it's, it's already up there, and we're working on it. Did that answer your question?
Great, thank you.
Ashley, thank you so much. I've got, I've got a few questions for you.
Sure.
You were talking about smart metering, and, and of course, as a municipality, you know, we're very interested in lowering the cost of the energy that we utilize for safety measures, specifically, you know, our streetlights. And so in that, with your smart metering project, is there any possibility that the city could realize any savings, not necessarily be billed per pole, but for the electricity that we actually use? Is that a possibility? Do you see that happening for us here in Alamosa? Because my understanding is, we pay for a light whether it's working or not, whether it's using electricity or not. And if this smart metering process goes into effect, will we realize any savings as far as the municipality goes? And the other question I had for you was, obviously, natural gas and coal-fired plants are, are something that are taking a big hit right now, because I guess the mandates are essentially to go to renewables. And so what, what percentage of energy from those two sources do you see, and do you see them falling in importance or, or not? I guess those are the two questions I have for you.
Well, thank you. Okay, on your first question, I do get a lot of questions from people about, well, this is how much I use, you know, your KWH. Can I just pay for that? Well, the difference is, is that, say, for example, you have a car, and you go and you buy the car, and you bring it home, you park it in your garage, and you never move it from, you know, anywhere at all. You still have to pay for the loan of the car, you still have to pay for any maintenance on the car, you certainly have to pay for the insurance on the car. So those are those fixed costs that come in, and those are your, your pole, getting the electricity from where it is to the pole, and then any other mechanisms that go along with it. So your KWH, to me in that analogy, would be, for example, your gas that you put in the car to go from A to B. That's your power, but you still have to pay for the car. So there's the difference on that. What I would like to see us do is, and I'm not an energy efficiency expert on any stretch of the imagination, but I do have someone that is, and if you're interested, we can set up some time to kind of review what you guys have going on here, and really just kind of do a, a look-see at, at what you're doing, and are there some opportunities to use some different technologies, or maybe use your energy a little differently for the city, that would help you have some cost savings? So did that answer question A?
More or less.
Okay.
I, I guess what I'm after is, when you put gas in your car, you pay for the gasoline, which is total separate expense. And when I turn on the light, I, I pay for the light I use, or for the energy I use.
Right.
And nothing more, nothing less at home. Maybe the municipality extension is something I'm not understanding all that well.
Well, at your home, you are paying for the facilities, you're paying for the infrastructure, for the substations, for all those things. Those are also part of your bill. So your KWH and your facilities, your access charge, those are, are separate costs. So you may not realize it, but they're two separate things.
Okay.
So Ms. Valdez, to, to help.
I can buy that, yeah. I, I thank you. I thank you for that. And the second part of my question?
So, I'm sorry, to help, hi, over here. So to help answer that question with the example you gave, essentially, right now, we're being billed for both, right? We've got the, the kind of set for each of the poles, but then there is that usage rate as well.
Right.
To, to answer the mayor's question, so you might, with the smart meters, be able to more, they might be more accurate than the meters you have right now, but we are being charged for usage right now in addition to what would be the capital cost. Is that a correct summary?
I believe so. I think, you know, it'd be great to have Susan Davis, who's in our outdoor lighting, she can explain that program inside and out. And she's happy to come down anytime we need her to, and we would be happy to meet with you to discuss that.
So that's how that example compares to then what we're currently being charged?
I, yeah, and I understand. And the reason, and the reason I'm asking that question is because when the lights are out, crime takes a, you know, a jump. And we, we want to make sure that safety is, is paramount. And if we're paying for that safety, and it's not, it's not there in that form, then we're at a disadvantage. And so, okay, maybe we can listen to someone else, or, or have a conference of some kind, but.
Sure.
I think it's important to the citizens in this community to realize that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and.
Coal power and natural gas.
Okay. Well, and just before we move on to that, I, I would like to say, if you do have some outages with the streetlights and such, please feel free to let me know. If, if it's not getting fixed in a timely manner, I will put pressure on to make sure that it does, because we want to make sure you're safe, too. That's important to us as a community partner with you.
Thank you, Ashley.
You're welcome. So on natural gas and coal, well, it doesn't really matter which side of the fence you're on. I tend to say in, in public relations that, you know, perception is reality, as they say. And so Excel Energy is looking to expand its energy portfolio. We're doing that with the wind, we're looking to do it with solar. We still do have some coal within our, our system. Comanche, for example, in Pueblo, is one of those. But we've also just recently built a, it's called Comanche Solar Station, and it's right there in Pueblo. It is a large solar farm. So we're, we're, we're looking to be able to capitalize on Comanche as a, as the largest power plant in Colorado, but also to do it in a way that makes sense for the environment and lessen the carbon footprint, and offer those options. So we're really looking to do it in a way that makes sense, that's going to be most economical and cost-effective for our customers, because at the end of the day, you know, that's what we're, we're really doing. We're, I, I've worked for a couple of different utilities, and I have to say that Excel Energy is so thoughtful and so responsible in how they go to market and what they look to do. The customer's always key in that. And there are other utility companies that don't necessarily think that way, but I can tell you for sure that Excel Energy does. So I'd be happy to give you some information on what our mix is, that can give you, you know, some more finite examples on that, and broaden that picture for you.
Ashley, thank you so much for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
I, I really appreciate it.
Happy to do so.
And thank you for being here. Does anyone have any comments? Staff? Counsel? Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. It's my pleasure.
Please come back.
And call me if I can do anything.
And please come back.
And so as you're leaving, I just want to thank Ms. Valdez. When we had some of our snowstorms, she was checking in with me to make sure our facilities were doing okay, any of our major locations in town, and on, that's the first time I've received a, a phone call like that, or a text like that. So I just want to thank you, Ashley, for staying on top of us and, and making sure we're okay. And we appreciate it.
Happy to do that. And you have my number, it works both ways. Please feel free to call my cell whenever you need to. That's what it's there for.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you all. See you in a few weeks.
Okay. We'll now, now move on to business brought forward by city staff. Tonight, we have Public Works with a couple of items, and I will let Pat explain them to us. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, counsel. Tonight, we're asking you to consider approving a resolution providing for the addition of the Carver House to the City of Alamosa Registry of Historic Places. Originally built in 1901, the Carver House, named for Charles and Adelisa Carver, the original owners. It's served as a private home, a boarding house, and a commercial office space for over 115 years. Throughout its history, the Carver House has maintained its historical integrity and continues to exhibit the majority of its original architectural features, and it continues to do so today. In addition to the local registry. In addition to the local, in its addition to the local registry, will help to protect, enhance, and perpetuate the property, which is obviously reminiscent of past era's events and persons important in local history, and will facilitate and enhance the availability of incentives for the property owner to maintain its historic nature and appearance.
Are there any questions or comments for Pat on Carver House designation? Counselor Daniel?
Pat, thank you for that. I know there are businesses in there now. Do you know how many businesses there are in there?
I think there's three right now.
Three right now? I know when I first moved here, Tucasa was in there, and I-
Oh, really?
-volunteered for them, and so it was a great, it's a great space. And so, it's nice to see it best be proposed. So thank you.
Counselor Regal?
Well, if there's no further questions, I'll make the motion we pass Resolution Number Nine, Two Thousand Sixteen.
I've got a motion and a second on Resolution Number Nine, Two Thousand Sixteen. Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none? Start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move up on to the public hearing and second reading on Ordinance Number Ten, Two Thousand Sixteen, and ordinance amending in part the established pay plan for city officers and employees as referred to in Section Fifteen dash two of the City of Alamosa Code of Ordinances concerning personnel rules and regulations and pay plan for city officers and employees. Pat?
Thank you, sir. As we discussed at your last meeting, prompted by complaints from department heads regarding slow turnaround times at the fleet maintenance facility, a study was commissioned by the city in 2001 to identify appropriate staffing levels and help optimize fleet maintenance activities. The study identified two major conditions that needed to be addressed. One, the age and general condition of the fleet was requiring more maintenance time and effort than would be required for a newer fleet. And secondly, the mechanics were spending too much of their time doing paperwork, ordering parts, answering the telephone, and talking to salesmen. This prompted the creation of a service writer position that would be responsible for the day-to-day activities, parts ordering, troubleshooting, scheduling, et cetera, that were keeping the mechanics from actually working on the vehicles. This position was filled in 2003, and an additional mechanic was hired to backfill the new service writer's old position. In 2009, the service writer position became vacant and was never filled, once again leaving two people in the shop. Since the study was conducted in 2001, the city has added 91 pieces of equipment to the responsibilities of the fleet maintenance department. We've also added changing and repair of all of our light and heavy-duty tires, and fleet mechanic supervisor has been shouldered with more responsibility specific to budgeting, citywide plan, fleet planning, and new vehicle specification preparation. Tim and Aaron have done a wonderful job working to maintain effective service levels, but with the seemingly endless additions to the fleet, they are beginning to struggle.
Thank you, Pat. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments for Pat before I open the public hearing? Then I will open the public hearing on Ordinance Number Ten dash Two Thousand Sixteen, bring it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach the podium, identify Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on Ordinance Number Ten, Two Thousand Sixteen, bring it back to counsel for a decision or further discussion. Counsel?
I guess I'll start with-
Counselor Regal?
I'll start with some comments. Adding that much equipment to those two people, I can imagine what they were going through out there, you know? And as we continue to grow and grow, you know, I think even three people is not even enough to run that place. But I think with three people now, we'll at least have some kind of breathing room and be able to get some of that stuff done. So I, you know, I agree, we went through this, and we went through this pay plan, and this audit, and it is needed. So I agree with what you're presenting, Pat.
Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment, too. I'm truly amazed at the amount of work that Tim and Aaron and the rest of the staff have been able to accomplish with the staff that they currently have. And just seeing them work, and their working in action is amazing to see how they could turn things around and make something that's, I mean, just completely create something out of nothing is amazing. So I'm glad that we're able to move forward, hopefully here, and get them the assistance that they need to be more effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I too agree. And so, counsel, Counselor Stefano?
I move the approval of Ordinance Ten, Two Thousand Sixteen.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second on the approval of Ordinance Ten, Two Thousand Sixteen. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to information technology. Tonight, we have a first reading on Ordinance Number Eleven, Two Thousand Sixteen, and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Montevista and the City of Alamosa for the provision of information technology services. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Counsel, for the past several years, IT has been looking into the possibility of establishing a joint service model that would, in part, allow us to extend our technical experience to other governmental agencies within the San Luis Valley, and to help us fund additional IT personnel within our own department. With a joint service model in place, the participating agencies would realize cost savings in several different areas. Everything from hardware, software, training, and diversity in teams over individual, the cost of individual entities having those teams. We recently were contacted by the City of, City of Montevista, sorry, City of Montevista. They were experiencing a crypto virus attack, and asked for our help with that. We went down to help them out, our neighboring municipality here. And in doing so, we spotted several other things that also could help them out, and gave them some advice on those items. And it became apparent very quickly that they could benefit from this joint plan. And when we mentioned that to them, they asked us to expedite that. They were very much on board with that idea, their staff was. I don't know exactly where their counsel's at at this moment. And they asked for us to build that model out so that they could buy into that model, buy the services from the City of Alamosa, and allow us to grow our team and the services we could provide at the same time. So that is what this IGA is about. And they're looking at approximately $53,000, actually, it's $52,996 that they would be paying the City of Alamosa. We would then be hiring a tech. Here, our approximate cost on that tech is $46,633. And then there's some in there because we've based this on percentages of what we believe the time for the IT director, for our current technician, and the additional technician would be there. And that's where we arrived at those figures.
And Jim, it's my understanding they are going to consider this at a meeting tomorrow night-
That is correct.
-in Montevista.
Now, they don't have to go through the ordinance process to do so, they'll just be looking at the IGA.
Thank you, Jim. Counselor Regal?
I had a couple of questions. I agree that we should partner with any community if we have the facilities, the knowledge, you know, and we can help somebody out, that's great. But during all these conversations, in this partnership agreement, I've yet to see anybody from that government over here saying, well, can we help, or can we do this? I know they've been probably talking city manager to city manager, even, I don't know if that's even been happening, but it's been happening with the IT. And I don't, you know, and I was just going to ask the question, has their counsel approved it? And Heather just mentioned that they're still going to look at it. But I, I don't know.
That's going before their counsel tomorrow night.
Right. But I would think that, you know, you're, we would have some kind of communication with either their city manager-
Their city manager has been, their entire staff has been very much in favor of this. And that's why we put together so quickly. So we've been working with Heather, and with Forrest, and their finance director, and their chief of police to put this together.
And I appreciate the communication between both of yous, but it has to come to the council, I would think, you know? So I, I don't know, I've never seen this happen before this way, where the communication is just between staff and not, you're asking us to approve an intergovernmental agreement that yet nobody from their government has come and said, hey, well, we'd like for you to help us out with IT, or we'd like for you to help us with this or that. The communication between two governments, you know? I understand the communication within staff, which is great, and that's positive. But I'm yet to see anything, you know, I would, I would have loved to see maybe even a councilperson, the mayor, or even their city manager come before our council, say, thank you, thank you for helping us out with all this trouble we had with our problems over there, which you did a great job, you know? And I did have a chance to visit with one of the councilpersons, and now we had that signing for, that the government came down. But that's, that's all I've seen. So I, when you're asking me to approve an intergovernmental agreement that, you know, I read the agreement, but the communication there, you know? Maybe it's just me, I don't know about the rest of you guys, how you feel, but I, you know, through the years that I've been here, if somebody comes, a government comes and says, hey, you know, sure, we've talked to your staff, and we feel that you can do this for us, what do you feel, you know? So.
So, you know, I apologize if your preference was to have this handled in a different manner.
Apology's not needed. I'm just saying that there's a process, okay? And I'm not, and I'm not asking for an apology, I'm just saying there's a process when two governments want to work together, which we should be working with all governments, all six counties. I, you know, I've said, I've all through the long to CML, you know, we need to work together. But when it comes down to it, well, let's sit down, you know? Let's, city manager from Montevista, thank you for doing all this, your IT guy, we got this problem, blah, blah, this, you know? But, and even though, I'm totally for the, for the, for the agreement myself, so.
So part of what I was going to say is, you know, I know, Counsel, you've brought up as well, a desire, and the mayor as well, to have regular meetings with some of our partners here in the valley. And I think that's a very good tool to have more of those informal discussions in regards to sharing what we're struggling with, where we have some joint concerns, all of those types of things. And I know that we're looking at getting those set up on a more regular basis. In, in working with, with staff from Montevista, you know, obviously, it's something that you don't want to, we're public agencies, and so it's, it's a balancing act of how far does this exploration get before it becomes public? And, and so, in an effort to make sure that both governing agencies' boards are appropriately informed and kept in a loop, there was a lot of more of the nuts and bolts that were done behind the scenes in regards to what could this even potentially look like, and what would the potential cost be? And if it was something where their staff felt like, you know what, that's not going to work for us unless you do this, and if we were saying, well, you know, we're not sure we could do that. So a lot of those nuts and bolts kind of discussions of how this would even work, although I will say, from an IGA perspective, there really wasn't, you know, we weren't that far apart, to be honest. And so, some of that is just the part that staff's role is, is to handle some of that information. And then, I, it's a timing issue in regards to, their counsel hasn't formally reviewed this. And so, I'm not sure how we could get a representative from their board to be here officially. I know you mentioned the city manager, I'm sure if we would have given Forrest an indication that there was an interest, he'd be here. So I don't want you to interpret his lack of being here as not wanting to show support or being a good partner or anything like that. So I think, you know, I would just hate to have too much read into that in regards to him not being here. And so, you know, it was something where Forrest and I tossed around, well, should we have a joint meeting with, with both groups? And, and his opinion was that for them, it was so straightforward and needed that he didn't think it, we needed to waste each other's time on something like that. So it's not a matter of them not wanting to be a partner or anything like that. They, the impression we've been given is they definitely want it. They haven't formally reviewed it, though, until tomorrow night. And so, it's just a matter of trying to get, when you have two governing boards, and the timing of all of that information released.
And I guess, just, you know, I see both staffs working together, which is great, you know? And I, my curiosity is, well, do they even want it? And, but you're telling me that they, I guess-
From a staff?
According to their city manager, they really want it.
My impression is yes, but until they formally review it tomorrow, I can't, I can't say definitively in its conversations he's had with, with his counsel. So I'm not sure. But I can tell you, he has, every time I've run into him since Jim and Brandon have been out there, he, he's really been so appreciative. And I think he made a few comments at the CML meeting, and I know, I think he sent an email, and I must have neglected to forward that to counsel. So that they very much are very appreciative of Jim and Brandon's help and this prospect.
So I guess my second question, then, maybe is this too premature here? So let's say we go through and we pass it on first reading, and then it goes to them, and they don't want it.
Then we just wouldn't approve it on second reading?
But I think we just, I think this is too premature. Personally, I'd rather it go to them, and they visit it, and then if they want to pursue it, then they bring it back to counsel here, and with the understanding that we want to do an intergovernmental agreement. That would be my personal preference, instead of going through first reading now. And maybe Eric can shed some light on it.
I just wanted to say, from a procedural standpoint, this isn't just us being generous to the City of Montevista, we get benefits out of this as well, so we want it too. And most, I'm trying to think of, we've done a number of intergovernmental agreements, some fairly recently, and they've pretty much all been negotiated at the staff level and just brought to counsel. We've had the, the agreement with Mutual Aid for Fire Protection Services Inter Valley. You've got a, we have a statewide mutual aid agreement coming on as our next, next meeting, or the meeting thereafter. We've got in this meeting, the agreement with the Division of Fire Protection and Control with the state for an engine. All of these things kind of happen this way.
And to your comment, I guess, in the past, and maybe things have changed, you know, since this body right here makes the final decision on any kind of agreement, you know, I think counsel needs to be more involved in it, or, or that body and this body needs to do more communication, instead of just staff doing the communication. I'm doing, and I appreciate the legwork and all the stuff that needs to be done by staff, but I, I don't, you know, are we here just to, okay, staff did, this rubber stamp is-
Well, I think, as Heather said, you, you have expressed a desire to have more meetings with other governmental bodies in the valley.
Correct.
And that's, when you have those, these are the kinds of things that you talk about there.
And we're yet to have one yet. In fact, I, I visited with Matt, and I says, well, we've been talking for two years to have a meeting with you guys, and we talk about it, we never do, you know?
Yeah.
I want to have meetings with Antonio, or LaHera, with, you know-
Sure.
-all these different people.
Sure.
But I, I guess maybe things are changing, and maybe I'm from the old country then, you know?
Well, I mean, you put the shoe-
Council used to, council used to be involved, but now it seems staff puts together the agreement, and then brings it to council, and we read it, and then we make a decision.
Well, I guess from the, you know-
We're like, we're, I'm talking for me personally, because of how things have run in the past, and it seems like now that we're after the fact, you know? We come, we come and we read it, and we go through it. This right thing, this one here, I think is too premature, you know, because yet a body in Montevista, a government body has yet to even, they're going to just barely look at it, and we're over here already passing the first-
So again, I can't, I can't tell you what discussions the manager may or may not have had with individual council members. What I can tell you is, obviously, this is something we discussed at the retreat. We reviewed this pretty much in depth for the entire council on what we were looking at, and, and the- for the entire council on what we were looking at, um, and, and the process we were looking at doing, um, you know, from a form of government perspective, if you wanna vote to have people be involved in the operational side of things, that would be something you guys would need to discuss as a council. Um, but our hands are somewhat tied when we need to handle in a public environment, getting information to you guys equally. And, um, having council involved in some of those negotiations can make that more interesting, but it's always something you guys could explore together as a group.
Thank you, Heather. Uh, councillor Daniel?
Thank you, mayor. Um, respectfully, councillor Grego, I, I disagree with, um, the timing of this, and I, I do believe that we've, um, signed intergovernmental agreements before, and we did know this was, this was coming. Um, and so I feel very comfortable with the negotiations happening by staff and very comfortable reading and asking the questions that I need to ask, and so I just wanted to put that out there, um, as I can understand your personal preference, and, and I believe my personal one is that I think things are going okay. Um, the, the piece that I just had a question about is, in the public hearing, it might be nice for someone from Montevista to come, um, when we, when we set that, um, on June 15th, to have that discussion. And then I was wondering if any of us, or if there was a letter that needed to be presented tomorrow, um, at the Montevista City Council meeting, if, if there was any support we could provide that way, since the, just agreeing to an IGA is, is a little different for them on their end.
Well, and, and Jim, of course, has us covered from a staff perspective. Um, he was planning to be in attendance because, you know, obviously, they're entering new territory on working with us and may have questions on some of, you know, Jim's background, Brandon's background, expectations, those types of things. And so, um, it's much more new for them than we've always worked with Jim and Brandon. So...
We trust them.
So Jim's planning on, on being there, um, but obviously, from a council perspective, um, kinda getting to what Charlie's point was, if you guys, um, think it would make a good statement to be there as well as a, a sign of support, that's, you know, something for you guys to definitely discuss. But the meeting is tomorrow, and what time is that?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Thank you.
Councillor Coleman?
Thank you, mayor. I too would like to add to councillor Daniel's comments, um, in regards to staff, uh, doing their research and their due diligence, uh, in regards to this effort. I believe that we have some of the brightest, talented people in our IT department, and I call them the brain trust. Um, and I believe that when we give our staff the tools and the freedom and the resources to find ways to collaborate with other communities, we have to at some point in time, trust them and not really necessarily micromanage the process when we're paying them to do their jobs. It appears that you've done a good job by doing your research and finding out how this additional person will benefit, uh, not only the city of Montevista, but also there's benefit to the city of Alamosa. I saw a couple of benefits by just reading through the information. One, we will be able to, um, allow for better cross-training, uh, with our IT technology, uh, staff as well as Montevista, and also that additional staff person could help fill in the gaps to where when you or Brandon have to take leave or take a vacation, we won't lose too much, uh, in, in that area of, uh, with, as far as the staff is concerned. And they're also paying us fifty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars, uh, a year to make sure that they participate, uh, in the, the cost of that new person and the services that they're receiving. When you look at the math, when you look at the numbers, Montevista is receiving a benefit, and we're also receiving a benefit as well. They can't really afford to pay a person like you, Jim, I know that. We're not gonna talk about your pay or anything like that, but we know that. But by them paying into this, they gain access to some of your knowledge that helps them and prevents them from going through dra, dramatic issues with their technology like they encountered this past month. So I'm really impressed with the efforts and the work that you and Brandon has done, and I trust our staff when it comes to them working out agreements with other governmental agencies, and I trust the information that you're providing to us, uh, is, is for the best interest, not only for Montevista, but also for Alamosa as well.
Thank you.
My question though, and one other comment I wanted to add to it though, with that being said, um, one thing that I would like to see if possible, uh, and you can probably find this out tomorrow when you're in Montevista, I would like to see if there's any type of good faith, um, effort, commitment we can get from the city of Montevista, showing that they're committed to this project for a minimum of, minimum of three years, because we are gonna invest in this person, and it'll be difficult for us to have to make adjustments if they're not really committed. So to see some form of good faith commitment would be something that I would like to see.
The IGA itself is a three-year commitment.
So councillor Coleman and I met, and, and, um, you shared your, your concerns on the long-term, because obviously, if this doesn't work out, we're left with an, with an FTE and, and a decision what to do, which is something to consider. Um, after that meeting, going and looking at what the attached agreement, it, it is a three-year agreement. Now, there's ways they can terminate, because it is true, we have to be careful binding boards' hands, um, but it is to show that, that commitment for three years. So thankfully, it is written in there, and that's what they'll be considering tomorrow night.
Okay, that's great, because when, when, that's showing that they're putting a skin in the game and they're committed to it, and, and we'll see the benefits of this for sure within that three-year time period. Thank you so much, Heather, Jim, and Brandon.
Councillor Grego?
Couple of comments to address, uh, councillor Coleman. I am not asking to micromanage nothing. And trust, I didn't use, I'm not saying I untrust staff and all that, but council needs to be involved in some way. Apparently, they are, because I guess you met with the city manager and discussed this. And then, wait, let me finish, okay?
I'll let you finish, but...
Okay. And so, all I'm saying is, we need to be involved in some of this stuff, you know. I know some of you guys are very, very busy in, in your jobs and all that, but, you know, that's, that's up to you, you know. We still need to be involved in all this process, and it's not micromanagement, it's being part of the decision body-making at the final, final deal. So trust, I never said nothing about trust, and I never said nothing about micromanage. I, I, we've got some of the best staff, we, we paid best for the best staff. So we have some of the best staff, you know, and as far as the fifty-two thousand, they still have to agree on that. We don't even know if they're gonna agree on that. It has to go to them, and they're the ones who have to say, yeah, well, we will pay fifty-two thousand, and we won't pay fifty-two thousand. So, but other than that, like I said, all I brought was the fact that for some reason, we're out of, and I hate to use this term, out of the loop, and I know we discussed this at the retreat, that we were doing this, we were doing this work over there, and that we're gonna do a different stuff with other communities, but I just, I, I don't know, I just feel that there's no, no communication there within two, two, uh, governmental bodies. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Grego. Uh, I'd like to interject a, an observation here. Normally, when we have intergovernmental agreements with any government, and, and I'll point out a specific issue, and that is water taps and sewer taps with the county. And we all know that when we deal with the county, we are asking them to request, to request whether they pay or not, that they request for a sewer water tap exemption. Out of courtesy, they do that. They have come back and said, well, you know, this should just be a regular process, we shouldn't even have to ask you. But they do. They come and they sit in the audience and they ask for that exemption. And I, I think that councillor Grego is just basically, uh, talking about a request from a governmental or elected governmental, uh, person, uh, of another elected governmental, uh, board. And I think that's what he's asking for, and I'm not sure that, uh, he is, uh, or, or should be chastised for that. I think it's, it's a, it's a valid point, and, uh, I, I somewhat agree with him. Uh, I, I totally agree that, uh, we're not trying to micromanage, uh, staff at all. Staff is doing a wonderful job. Uh, but, um, sometimes when things come to us like this, we're kinda, we're kinda like wondering what happened behind the scenes, but it's, it's nice to know that this has occurred and that we are moving forward with an intergovernmental agreement with, uh, Montevista. And my feeling is, if there are other communities in, uh, the valley that would like to help, uh, we could probably, uh, you know, afford them some guidance as well. But at this point in time, Monty's the only municipality that we're looking at, and I think we're gonna benefit tremendously by this intergovernmental agreement and tremendously by the, uh, efforts that are put forward by this, the city of Alamosa and, and actually the, uh, city council of Alamosa. And so that's my observation. Councillor Coleman, did you have another comment?
Yes, sir. With all due respect to you, mayor, and all due respect to you, councillor Grego, I was not trying to chastise anyone. All of you have access to the same information that I have access to. I don't see how you can say that you're kept in the dark when you receive the information, like, well, what, what I'm saying is, the way it appears, it sounds like maybe I have, I was more privy to this information than you, and that's not the case. You all could have walked into Heather's office, just like I did, and had conversations with her about this issue if you decided to. So that's what I'm just trying to clear with you.
Thank you, council. Uh, councillor Stefano?
How, um, councillor Coleman, uh, just reiterating what you said, uh, how would we know, how did we know that you were gonna have this conversation? We were unaware. You say that we're, um, this information is, uh, accessible to all of us? I had no clue about it, uh, either. Or I, I would, we just don't step into her office and say, hey, what about Montevista? Cause I had no clue about it till now. So, uh, another question for Jim. Um, is it, is this gonna put a lot of stress on, on you guys, uh?
Ultimately, there'll be a bubble of work, but ultimately, we're gaining thirty percent more of an employee.
And, and I kinda agree with, uh, the mayor and Mr. Grego. Uh, we were in the dark about this. Uh, this isn't the first time this has happened. I think this occurred one more time since I've been on the council, that something was brought up, and we were in the dark about it, it was just dropped in our lap. Um, so I think we, we, I agree with them. I think we should be informed ahead of time of what's really going on behind the scenes, so we can make a really, uh, uh, smart decision or, or an equitable decision as to what's going on. Uh, I, I agree that it's, it's a great thing if it happens, but how did you arrive at the fifty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars with Montevista?
That's based on the percentages that are in that, uh, communication. So that is, uh, based on a ten percent on the IT directors' time, seventy percent of an additional tech, and twenty percent of a second tech, and it's based on their salary levels and training for those people.
So this, this is in the works right now. They haven't really agreed to this, to this, to this term, or anything like that?
No, they'll, they'll make their decision tomorrow night, and, and we'll have something to bring forward to the second reading.
Thank you.
Councillor, this is, uh, uh, first reading, so, uh, we can, uh, if we can move along, uh, councillor Daniel?
Oh, I, I...
Okay, councillor Coleman?
Just to answer councillor and Stefano's question, um, to how I found out about it, it was posted on the agenda, and when I read it on Friday, that's how I found out about it. And when I had my meeting with, uh, city manager, like I usually do, uh, I brought it up and got more information. That's how I heard about it. So it was available as of last Friday.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. Councillor Daniel?
And, and I, I know we need to move on, but I, I do feel like it is, um, important as council and for our community to understand, uh, that we are, these are made available to us, and I think that the challenge is that some of us process differently. Um, I don't, I don't think it's a, a negative thing, I don't think it's a how, how we do things, but how we've either been, um, engaged in the process or not is different for each one of the seven of us. Um, and so I think that that's part of the challenge that, um, the community is seeing at this point in how we engage, uh, with the team and how we engage with the information we're provided. And so I think it's really about, um, Heather has a huge challenge in meeting all of our needs, because all seven of us are different. And so I do think that we've had a different opportunity to talk about these things and to, you know, discuss them at the retreat and to kind of look at this in paper. Um, and so we just haven't found the balance that, that works for all of us, and so I do think that there's just a different, a different way that maybe we all need to look at how we bring this information up and these questions, um, because it is available to us in different ways. And so I think we just need to work through that sometimes.
Councillor Stefano?
Thank you, uh, councillor Daniel. Uh, I agree with it. I mean, I have no problem with it. If it, if it's set in stone, I mean, I, I say go for it. I have no problem with that. Uh... Cause it, it sounds good for both of us. It's a win-win for everybody all around, it sounds like. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stefano, and so, uh, the chair will entertain a motion on this first reading ordinance eleven dash twenty sixteen. Councillor Daniel?
I move that we approve upon first reading ordinance number eleven twenty sixteen, approving an intergovernmental, governmental agreement between the city of Montevista and the city of Alamosa, and recommend that we set it for a public hearing on June 15th.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on ordinance number eleven twenty sixteen? See none, start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate your presence. We will now move on to, uh, business route forward by city staff fire, uh, first reading on ordinance number twelve dash twenty sixteen, and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement by and between the Colorado Division of Fire Prevention and Control and the City of Alamosa Fire Department. Thank you for being here, chief.
Mayor, council, thank you. What's before you tonight is the intergovernmental agreement between the Division of Fire Prevention and Control and the city. What it does, it allows, we've been housing since last March, an engine out at Station Two that belongs to the state, and they have been staffing that engine. Uh, they've responded to our calls, we can utilize those folks however we need them. This formalizes that agreement, it's a five-year agreement, clarifies how we use them. They're available to us twenty-four seven, seven days a week, obviously, unless they're out on another assignment someplace else or helping another community. There is no cost or obligation to the city, there is no liability to the city. What it essentially does is provide another engine to us and a crew anywhere from three to five, uh, at no cost, whenever we need them. Monday through Friday during the day, that truck is fully staffed out at Station Two, so this is just a formal agreement to clarify all of that.
Thank you, chief. Uh, council, do we have any questions or comments of the chief? Councillor Da, Daniel?
Um, chief, thank you for, for explaining that. How, how long has this agreement been going with the state?
We've actually started this, uh, last Mar, a year ago March, and so they had seasonal employees on that engine. Those seasonal employees were off last winter, now they're moving into a full-time position. So essentially, that truck is gonna have three to five guys on it for at least ten, most likely twelve months a year. Um, they've been working hand-in-hand with us, assisting us on brush fires, car accidents, structural fires, whatever. The nice thing about it is, the crew that's on that truck, with the exception of one, are all firefighters from here.
Oh, great.
So they're actually our staff anyway, so that helps in our operation. The other individual is with Montevista Fire Protection District as a volunteer with them, so he's got some great experience also. And so this formalizes that agreement, takes the liability and sets it up for five years to where we know they're gonna be dispatched through CSP on our dispatch channel and that kinda thing, so we just clarified how that process is gonna work through this agreement.
Thank you.
Councillor Coleman?
I just have a comment, chief. You mentioned earlier to me that you had a very busy weekend, so with an agreement like this, this will help you out quite a bit, I'm quite sure.
Yeah, and as we work through the summer months, daytime availability gets tough, and I, also on the weekends, cause everybody's gotta go play, so. It's been a big help to us the last few months, and it's a great asset for us, there's just no, no doubt about it. You know, anytime you get something at no cost, it's great, especially when it's a good benefit like this.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. What are the, uh, parameters, uh, or the distances, or what are the municipalities or towns that are involved? Or just, you said Salida, uh, are these all, all the cities and towns in the valley plus, or?
Actually, they are working the agreements through everybody in the valley, through all municipalities. We've already signed off on it on the fire district side, and so the communities that are totally served by fire districts are signing those agreements. Um, actually, in this valley... Actually, in this valley, Alamosa's the only one as a municipality to sign the agreement. The rest of it's done by fire protection districts. So they are available to any fire agency in the San Luis Valley. And they do assist Montevista quite a bit, and they are starting to assist a little bit more down south and a little bit at our neighbors in Costilla County also. But we seem to be the prime benefactors of that truck being here.
Thank you, Chief. With the, with the large distances that we have to cover with our fire district and, you know, our fire people, it's, it's advantageous to have these kind of agreements in place because-
Yeah, it is. A lot of times, these folks can be on scene prior to us getting on scene because they're already on the engine. So depending on the location, they may actually get on scene a couple, two or three minutes before we arrive. So they get the initial size-up done. If it's something they can start handling, they'll start an initial attack with their engines. So, so it helps us get a jump on things a little bit.
Appreciate it, Chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions of the chief? The chair will entertain a motion. Councilor Stefano?
I don't have a question, but I say we accept ordinance number 12-2016, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the Colorado Division of Fire Prevention and Control, set for public hearing on June 15, 2016.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second on ordinance number 12-2016. Any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Council. We all, then we'll move on to committee reports. One council has a committee report.
Councilor Grego? I'll start. I had an airport committee report. We met and we discussed the boutique and the Great Lakes presentations that were given. And the airport board decided to, to side with boutique. One of, some of the questions and comments we've been getting from, from constituents is the fact of the baggage, how they're going to handle the baggage, the, the amount of baggage, the type, the transfers. And we've told them that boutique is trying to work something out with the major carrier and stuff. So they're going to, they're going to try to get it corrected as soon as possible. But we did review both presentations. Like I said, we, we had a presentation given to us by Great Lakes. We had one given to us by boutique. And after that, the comments we got from the community on both of them, we decided to go ahead and give a, a support to boutique. So that was probably it. So.
Thank you, Councilor Grego. Anyone else? Okay, we will then move on to staff announcements. Ms. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. Just looking at council calendar, we do have some events coming up and a lot of work sessions as well. June 14, we have the annual board appreciation dinner that the city clerk has been coordinating, and that will be held at the SLV brewery. So that's a different location for that function. And it's always a great opportunity for us to show our appreciation for the volunteers who, who serve on our boards and commissions. So that's a very important date. We have a few work sessions coming up on June 15. We are starting you at 5:00 PM with the Ice Rink multipurpose facility that will then bleed into the 6:00 PM liquor authority training. We wanted to, in regards to the Ice Rink multipurpose facility, provide council in a timely manner, some more time to, to process that project. I will also be placing that on the agenda, should you guys happen to be ready to provide some direction. It by no means, means you would have to, but in case you are ready after that work session, it will be on the agenda as well. Given the time constraints we'll face that night, we do plan on providing dinner at the work session. So we wanted to make sure you're aware of that. And for those not here tonight, we'll make sure they, they are aware of that as well. I think there might be a few executive sessions as well. So June 15 is going to be a fairly meaty night for council consideration. Then at the end of June, we have the CML conference, and we're very fortunate that everyone is able to attend that. That is a wonderful opportunity to network with other communities, find out, you know, what their struggles are, what their successes are, learn from them, and then also some of the best practices that are going on at the state and to bring those back to our community. So I'm really grateful that everyone will be able to attend that. June 29, we will have a work session. Two of the items were the items remaining from our retreat when we ran out of time. And that is the non-harassment discrimination training and the mental health discussion. We also have one item in regards to some of the changes I am making to the employee personnel manual. Just want to make you aware of one or two items within that. Following that, on July 6, we'll have a work session for the CIP. And then today at the staff, we discussed swapping what used to be the previous last two work sessions and placing the work session for marijuana on August 3. That allows council time, should you decide that you want to place it on the ballot for this year. That allows you the time needed, which then means August 17 would be the continued discussion for the council policy manual. So my hope for that work session is to take some of the feedback we received at the council retreat and let you continue processing the, the council policy manual at, at that point in time. So a lot of work sessions. It might be summertime, but it seems we're still working pretty hard. Wanted to give council as well an update on a few things. Pat informed me that we have received the bids for Richardson, and we're, should get within any day the notice to proceed from CDOT. So hopefully, we can begin that project. Obviously, Pat feels the pressure to try to get that done before the school season starts again, in fall. We did meet with the county on a different topic in regards to the animal shelter. This is something we discussed at the retreat and in a previous meeting as well, in regards to with the new construction that is occurring out at Alpine Veterinary Clinic, that will create some septic system issues for the, the animal shelter. So in working in partnership with the county to explore what our options are, it looks like we may have a short-term solution that we'll have on your next agenda for, I believe, June 15. And what we would be recommending is the short-term solution to buy us no more than five years, maybe less, while that gives us time to have the discussions that Mr. Grego's referred to, and that we need to get some agencies around the table for a long-term solution of what an animal shelter should look like, what our role should be, not be those types of discussions. And so it will buy us some time to, to figure out what a more permanent solution should be in regards to an animal shelter. But those have been very positive discussions with all parties involved, including those who operate the shelter, the property owner, and the county. And so more information will, will come for your, your council meeting next, next time. I think council received the email from the county in regards to the airport and receiving the Department of Transportation letter on the funding for the essential air service. We've been drafting a letter for the mayor's signature that will help that they can use as an appendix for whatever information they send. We hope to have that ready for your signature tomorrow, Mayor, so we can meet the deadline that they can get that information sent in and hopefully get that funding continued, because obviously, it's essential for us to, to continue that partnership. And I believe, unless staff has anything else, Heinz, did you have anything from a, I know Summer Fest is, is this weekend, and so Cole Park will be very busy and, and humming with people. And that will take up most of staff's time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Heather. We'll then move on to our Liquor Licensing Authority action. And tonight, we have a Needs and Desires Hearing on the application of Society Hall Foundation, doing business as Society Hall Foundation, for a beer and wine license at 400 Ross Avenue. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us and allowing us. Ms. Martinez, you wanted me to bring the poster. Do I need to turn that over?
Is that the notice for the application, giving notice of the application that was posted at the site?
That was, it was posted at the site on May 20, and hadn't been posted until today.
Yeah, if you bring, if you'll give that to the clerk, then we can identify that as Exhibit A.
You probably want petitions also?
If you have petitions, that would be nice.
Thank you very much. We'll turn this over to Eric, our counselor, and-
Thank you, Mayor. So-
We'll go from there. Thank you.
We'll, we'll open the public hearing then. And Mr. McGee, I take it that you and Ms. Brown are appearing on behalf of Society Hall Foundation?
That is correct.
And you, you've presented the poster that is the notice of the application that you say was posted on May 20. Is that right?
That is correct.
Through, through today. So we'll mark that as Exhibit A. And you have handed me, one, two, three-
I had 71 total signatures on those pages. Just a quick-
We'll mark those as Exhibit B.
Okay, a quick examination of them. I counted 55 as being within city limits and 16 outside of the city limits. Some of those probably were within a mile of the city boundary. All of them were in favor of our beer and wine license application.
Where were those signatures gathered?
At the Society Hall, 400 Ross Avenue.
All right. So as you are no doubt aware, the purpose of the Needs and Desires Hearing is to establish whether there is a need and desire for a beer and wine license in the neighborhood. The neighborhood being defined currently as the city boundaries plus a one-mile radius outside the city boundaries. You can propose a different definition if you wish. People who object to the application can propose that there should be a different definition, but that's the standing default definition of what the neighborhood is and has been such for about 20 years. So with that, if you would just give council some background on what the application is looking for, what you're, what you're hoping to do with the license, and then we'll open it up to public comment as well.
Thank you. I do have a prepared statement written. Certainly, we appreciate the opportunity to bring forward our application for the beer and wine license. And I understand this is a need and desire portion of the hearing. Let me start off with saying that there's, first of all, there's only one other beer and wine license, to my knowledge, within the city of Alamosa, and that is held by a restaurant. Since we purchased the facility, the Society Hall, at 400 Ross in August of 2015, we've had over 18 special event permits. This year alone, we're already at 13. We are limited to 15. Two of our events that we've had since we've purchased the facility have been fundraisers for other organizations. We also have hosted two memorial services, which did not necessitate a special event permit. We have never, to my knowledge, received any complaints, nor have we had any issues or problems with underage attempted purchase of alcohol, or what I would refer to as overserved alcohol consumption. The special events permits that we have received to date have demonstrated that the success of the Society Hall, the request for, the success of the Society Hall, this request for a permanent license is not something that we hope to happen, but something that I think we've already demonstrated there is a need and there is a desire within the community. Again, having 12 special events this year alone, we're June 1, that's running above average of two a month. The hall seats 187 people and provides the audience with an opportunity to, to enjoy performing arts in a close and intimate environment. The acoustics in the hall are fabulous, and every performer we have had has remarked on the quality of this facility in terms of both acoustics and the warmth of the facility. We are generating a dedicated following of individuals who appreciate a live performance in such a setting as the hall provides. We have established partnerships with other promoters and organizations, and certainly hope to expand these partnerships. To my knowledge, there is no other facility within the city, within the county, and perhaps even the six counties that make up the San Luis Valley, that offer the same environment as the Society Hall, that being an auditorium setting where people come, sit, and listen, or view a performance. For the city of Alamosa, the Society Hall truly is becoming the facility where a community celebrates. So why should we be granted a beer and wine license? Performing arts provides our community with an opportunity to engage their intellect and spirit into a moment where there is a definite synergy between the performers and the audience. That moment, as all moments, is fleeting, but has a long-lasting effect on the well-being of both the performers and the audience. Does the offering of alcoholic beverage enhance the unique experience? I would argue that it does, in that the responsibility that comes with this license for both the Society Hall and the audience is enhanced with the availability of adult beverages. It is a comfort level that is associated with being an adult, and more importantly, or as importantly, acting as an adult. To deny the Society Hall a beer and wine license is to deny our community of a venue where one can sit and enjoy an outstanding event in an outstanding facility, enjoy a glass of wine or beer, and immerse themselves into the moment of the performance. These performances help to relieve stress, promote creative thinking, boost self-esteem, increase brain connectivity and plasticity, increases empathy, tolerance, and feelings of love. I've been personally amazed at being myself brought to tears during performances that we've had at Society Hall. But what's even more amazing, as I thank the people as they leave the hall, how many of them comment that they too were brought to tears during the performance. There is something very special about the Society Hall, and the talent that we have been bringing to Alamosa and the beer and wine license that we are applying for will certainly help to make the events we have at the Society Hall a whole event. I would hope that the city of Alamosa will be proud to have a facility such as the Society Hall, which brings a whole new range of cultural offerings to our community.
Thank you, Mr. McGee.
Thank you.
Ruth, did you have anything to add?
I don't know why I'm here. Well, the other big thing, and it goes without saying, is it's expensive to buy a special events license. Even if we could buy 100 of them, it's expensive, and it's a pain in the butt, and Holly's tired of seeing us and all that type of stuff. So we, we just want to make it easier. We want to make it where if someone calls up, and we're having this happen, it's, it's pretty cool, can we play in a week and a half? Can, we're coming through town, can we, and we're like, oh, man, we don't have a license, blah, blah, blah. You know, it, it's complicated. And so all that, that Pete said, and it would save us money.
And, and I need to add something, that working with city staff has been a true pleasure. Ms. Martinez, Pat Steenberg have both been very, very helpful in this application, very, very informative, very knowledgeable, and has made this for myself a, a very easy experience. And I, I do agree with Ruthie that we have a lot of performers. We are in a unique position of people who travel from Albuquerque to Colorado Springs to Denver, people coming from Colorado Springs going to Durango, and they end up with a knight on their hands. And they contact us, hey, can we, can we do a gig at the Society Hall? You know, we do, we offer a split at the door. It's better for them than sitting around doing nothing in hotel room. And again, having this permanent license will allow us to be able to do that on the fly. We've just started an open-mic performance series, the last Thursday of every month. We're real helpful, that that will help attract a, a young crowd, especially when the college gets back in. It's, it's just really taken off, and I, I've tried, and I know I failed- It's, it's just really taken off, and I, I've tried and I know I failed to convey how much the people who have been attending the performances have appreciated it. In terms of beer and wine sales, it's a little disappointing because it's not a venue where people stand around and drink all night. People will come in, they'll get a glass of wine, a beer, and they go sit down. And then at intermission, they may get another one. We sell way more water and pop than we do beer and wine. But I think to give us an edge, if you will, on the bars and Richardson and Leon that don't have the ability to offer alcohol beverages, I think that is, makes it more of an adult-type of venue.
And that being said, we have a great event, June 9th, Ronnie Cox Trio. A folk singer, nationally known, coming through. You could actually come by and see what we do there. You have to pay, because Pete and I have to pay. It's kind of funny. We get to pay, we get to buy a beer, and then we get to work, but that's kind of how we operate. But it's going to be a, a really, really great show, so if you have any questions, come by and see us.
Heads up, Carla Bonoff, October 15th, national-known recording artist.
Eric, if I may, Counselor?
Before, before you open it to the, the audience, can we ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, thank you, sir. I have a couple of questions. Are you, are your neighbors, have you had an opportunity to talk to your neighbors? And secondly, are they even aware that you're applying for a license? And I failed to ask that last, next, last hearing, but is this...
I have not spoken to them directly. We've had that poster posted in the windows since May 20th. We haven't had any complaints. They see us, obviously, a lot of times several hours before the performance, but it's actually a very, very quiet, more of a business community. Of course, we have the San Luis Valley Federal Savings and Loan to the east of us. We have an insurance company just to the south of us, our closest neighbor. Across the street, the house on the corner, Stefan Nitenzio's house or office is on the market for sale. We see very, very little traffic of the other two houses. And I, I remember you mentioning that, and I apologize for not having made myself available to them to go...
There, there is a, a neighbor, and for the life of me, I'm drawing a blank. She would live Steve's house, then there's a rental, and then there on the pretty brick house. Anyway, her son was a musician. His life ended a few years ago, and she's very happy with what we're doing. In fact, we're in the process of ordering a memorial brick for him, and it, it's just Eddie Lee Bullington. He, he would have played here. So, she's probably the only real neighbor, you know, people living right there in the neighborhood that, that I've even seen, so... And in Savings and Loan, I talked to Dwayne Bussie a week or so ago after one of our last events, and I mean, they have no problems with us.
And I guess the, the reason I asked the question is because the parking part of it, okay? Do you have enough parking? Because when you have an event, people are going to park in front of people's properties.
Well, and Savings and Loan has given us use of their parking lot in the evening and on weekends. And, you know, other than that, because of, of where the building's located, we're kind of like any church in town, you know? You have parking and, and, you know, people have to park and walk. I think we're hoping to do our, a handicap spot up front, and then maybe a handicap spot in Savings and Loan that we can just sign. And then also, we've talked about doing just a, a loading zone or a drop-off zone where we, we wouldn't mark that on the sidewalk or anything, but we would sign it during events so that folks can be dropped off and then someone can go park. And, and that might be like, say, we have another memorial service coming up July 6th for the Russell family and a lot of older people. And, and so we want to make it accessible for them, and also we have that, that great new ramp on the south side of the building, which is just like fun. So, we want, we want people to go there, but, you know, if you go downtown and you can't find a parking spot, you, you drive a little bit and you drive a little bit further, so...
And you did mention that ramp, that's a beautiful ramp that you put there for handicap.
Isn't that pretty? Yeah, can hardly wait to get that painted.
Trinidad Junior State College really helped us out on that.
Oh, that really came out really good.
They're classed at all that welding. It was a great partnership. We, we've invested over 85,000 in renovations on that building to date. And, and again, the, the thing that always amazes me, we purchased it August 1st. We had our first event September. I mean, again, this isn't an application for a license in the hopes that we can build something. We've built it. It's been operating. It's been working. We'd just like to move on to the permanent license.
Thank you, Counselor.
I have a couple of questions. During these events, are you going to provide some type of security? Are you going to have somebody to card these people, make sure they're, they're over 21 and, and stuff like that?
Yes, yes, sir. We do that on a regular basis for every show.
Most of our crowd has gray hair, so we're, we're pretty good.
Yeah, I, I tend to bring the average age of the crowd down to about 72. Only teasing. It is an older crowd, because it, these, you know, young people, and this is, this is not trying to be critical or trying to categorize or judgmental. Younger people like livelier music, louder music. They like to be up and moving. This is not that type of facility. This is a facility people come in, they sit down, and they truly enjoy watching the performers, enjoy the music. And, and that tends to be kind of an older crowd. One reason we are migrating to this open mic is to try to attract a younger crowd of potential musicians, people who want to break in to the, to the industry perhaps.
And, and when we do have the younger crowd, we've had some comedy shows there that have been pretty fabulous. We do use the wristbands and card them when they come in the door, so...
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, and I guess we will open it up to anybody wishing to speak either in favor of or against this application.
Should I sit down or...
Yes, you should. You may come back up later on, but you don't want to be there intimidating anybody who has something to say to you, Pete. So if there's anyone wishing to speak to this application, please step forward, identify yourself, and give us your comments.
Well, my name's Ron Brink. You can tell these folks are passionate, done their homework, and I would say that this is an application that should be approved. Thank you.
I'm Mark Martinez. I'm one of the young guys. I guess Pete and Ruthie's vision of, of attracting more and more artists and having artists use Alamosa as kind of a stopover is kind of a big deal, especially for bigger-named artists, as, as word gets out of this nice venue and the crowd that it could potentially draw. I think you're going to start seeing bigger and bigger artists coming to Alamosa, and then at some point possibly having people come here for those artists specifically. So just kind of in the mind of, of economic growth, economic development, that kind of thing, drawing people to Alamosa as a destination, I mean, this is one more possibility, you know, having a venue like this. And I think honestly, just having a beer and wine license is kind of a given at a nice venue like this as well. I mean, yeah, you have the college, and that's great, but when someone can go and they can sit and enjoy a beer or a wine during a live music performance or during, you know, a comedian or something like that, something that's drawing people here, why not? You know, absolutely. And, you know, like, like Pete and Ruthie both mentioned as well, it's not the kind of venue where people are going in and they're having, you know, four beers. It's, it's something they're going to, they're going to sit down, they're going to enjoy their performance and, and have it at that. So, just voicing my support. I think this should be passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Anybody else wishing to comment? All right, I'll turn it back to counsel. I don't know whether you have any further questions for the applicant or wish to close the public hearing.
Counselor, are there any further questions or comments? Now we'll close...
Mayor, before you close, one comment, and we pretty much ask it of every applicant. Are you aware of the liquor laws and all that? Do you have the booklet that gives you the liquor laws and all that stuff? If not, we could probably get one from Mrs. Holly.
We do post, which is required by law, that it's, and I can't remember the exact wording, Ms. Martinez, but it's basically, you know, it's illegal to sell or offer alcohol to underage or to obviously intoxicated people. In terms of an actual book, I don't, and that's an excellent suggestion. I will contact Mrs. Martinez.
I think that would be, you know, in case you have questions, and it kind of gives you the direction on how to run the operation and stuff, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and so with that, we will close the public hearing. Bring it back to counsel for further discussion or direction of staff.
And again, typically, I will prepare findings, draft findings for counsel to consider at your next meeting, both granting and denying, and you can take action at that point, but you're, you're free to do other than that typical procedure, but that's the typical procedure.
Thank you, Counselor, and so, Counselor Stefano.
I move that we approve this application for the license for Society Hall Foundation.
Are we going to wait for findings of fact, Counselor Stefano? And make our decision next week? That's, that's a normal procedure, isn't it, Counselor?
That is your normal procedure. You don't always follow it.
That's fine. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Excuse me, Mayor. Conclusion, counsel should conduct the hearing as required, standard procedures to make a decision at or the following meeting. We can make a decision tonight. We have...
You have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Seeing none, the motion fails, and so we will wait for our findings of fact. Thank you, Counselor Stefano.
May I ask a quick, so the process now is at the next city council meeting on the 16th.
Yes, sir.
Are presents required?
Your presence is not required. The public hearing is closed, so there won't be any more evidence taken. All that will happen will be counsel will debate and deliberate as to the granting or denial of the, of the application. So, of course, you're welcome to attend.
Right.
But it's, but it's not required that you do so.
So we will not be asked any questions or clarifications or anything like that?
No, counsel's decision will be based on the evidence presented tonight.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. McGee.
It's June 15th, not 16th, just to make sure we're clear.
I don't know why I'm thinking. I can hear better now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGee, and thank you, Ms. Brown. Appreciate it. We'll then move on to Consent Calendar B. Consent Calendar B allows multiple actions with one motion. It contains routine items that have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Counsel may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have two issues, two items on Consent Calendar B. One is Alamosa County Chamber of Commerce beat the heat Beer Garden July 29 and 30 of 2016, and the SLV Brewery Temporary Modification of Premises to Casa Rock Against Rape Awareness Event, July the 23rd, 2016. Counselor Daniel.
Mayor, I would move that we approve Consent Calendar B.
Counselor Stefano, I've got a motion and a second on Consent Calendar B. Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have counsel comment. Are there any counsel comments? Counselor... Counselor... Sorry. Counselor Grego. Counselor Coleman. Go ahead, Counselor Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. Grego. I would like to thank the entire, entire city staff for all of their hard work and dedication that they put into making the Story Walk that's located outside a beautiful and informative experience for those who come to our City Hall facility, the library, as well as the park. It really turned out to be something special and beautiful, and it was great to see so many people come out to the ribbon cutting. And even Counselor Grego, he was there. Appreciate you showing up too as well, Counselor. And I'd like to thank the Alamosa Literacy Council and their staff for their hard work and dedication, as well as those who participated from TSJC and also the Save the Children staff. But once again, city, your data staff, you did a wonderful job. It's really a beautiful site. I encourage everyone to take a walk and read the Story Blue. That's my favorite children's book, and you learn a lot. Thank you.
Counselor Daniel.
Counselor Grego has been waiting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Grego, I apologize.
She probably talked about this one. I attended the, the Methadone Clinic presentation, and it was a great presentation. They gave out a lot of great information, their successes with the clinic itself. I invited them back to come to counsel and give us a presentation, you know, kind of update the rest of the council. And then secondly, Memorial Day, we had the services out there at the cemetery, and I got a lot of compliments from the way the cemetery, the, the way it's, it's cleaned and the grass is cut and stuff. They, they even, they thanked me about the restrooms, even though Heinz did. I told them that eventually that's going, that's going to be, we're going to build something different, but they were really gratitude, and I wanted to thank you, Heinz, you know, and you've got a good staff out there. Danny Goveya, this Luke Bradshaw, and even Solomon, they put a lot of work out there. And, you know, I run out there, so I know what they're doing, and they, they do a lot of good work out there. So, I wanted to thank you, Heinz, for that, too. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to just mention the Methadone Clinic, and say a special thank you to the chief for being on our panel and answering questions that the community had and helping mitigate some of the fears, so thank you very much for that. I also wanted to say thank you to Mr. Brink for bringing up your concerns earlier about the, the needs and desires hearing from the last time. I appreciate the comments that you made, and I appreciate you bringing up your concerns to counsel and giving us other things to think about as we, as we continue to look at, at these hearings and other people wanting licenses. So, thank you for sharing your, your concerns tonight, and then I would encourage you to do what you did tonight and continue to speak at those public hearings so we, we can hear your perspective then as well. And then the last thing is, we did just approve the temporary modification of premise for the Rock Against Rape, and I just wanted to say it's very exciting that Tucasa is doing this. They usually do this in April, and they are now going to do it in July, so hopefully it is warmer. And I just want, I had some statistics from Tucasa that I wanted to share. It is estimated that under 10% of sexual assaults are actually reported to the police. 73% of those reported, or 73% of sexual assault survivors know their attackers. I think that's very important for us to realize. 38% of rapists are a friend or acquaintance. 28% are an intimate partner, and 7% are a relative. And so as we're looking at the things that we have going on in our community and the things we're trying to change, when we are talking about the lighting, we're talking about these fundraisers that we have, the community supports that we have, it's also really important to remember that we battle this every day, and so I hope people can go out and support the Rock Against Rape. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, and my comment is, this weekend, we have another opportunity to participate in the Festival on the Rio. A wonderful weekend, almost the start of summer. summer. Huh, Ruthie? You think the sun's going to shine and the wind won't blow? No. Anyway, please, come out, enjoy, you know, enjoy the festivities, all the booths, the food booths, all the booths that specifically deal with all sorts of art, and just the people. Just get out there and enjoy the people of our community and the communities that support us as well. Anyway, that's my comment. And Counselor Stefano has something else to say.
I just want to kudos to Heinz. I was also out there for the Memorial Day thing, and the military, the legion did a great job, and everything really looked nice. The grass was mowed, there was a lot of flowers. It was really great. There was a lot of people there, so, thank you.
No other comments? If there are no other comments, I will adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.